Good morning, everyone. This the Wednesday, May 1st, 2024. Regular meeting of the Nagshead Board of Commissioners is hereby called to order. We would like to welcome Attorney Wumble this morning substituting for John. Welcome. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
This morning, as we have a moment of silence, I want to note that earlier this week in Charlotte, North Carolina, Charlotte Mecklenburg, Officer Ayer, U.S. Marshal Weeks, North Carolina Department of Adult Corrections Officers Pelosi and Elliott were killed while attempting to serve warrants. Four other officers were injured. So as we take a few moments of silence this morning, let's lift up them and their families. Now if you'll stand as you're able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And before we go any further, if he's watching, I understand that today is former Mayor Bob Moher's birthday, so we will send a happy birthday to Mayor Moher. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda, and a motion would be in order.
Is it moved?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. That brings us to recognitions, and we will call first on Amy Miller.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Today is, we are celebrating Shannon Krasnowski's five-year anniversary with the town. She's our customer services representative, and I'm sure you all recognize her as she's the first person you are likely to see when you walk into Town Hall. She's definitely the face of the town, and she sets a positive tone for guests that call or visit. Today, I just want to give a few examples of how her contributions at work fulfill some of our core values. Attitude is key, and we are community stewards. These speak to how important we emphasize customer service and making sure all our guests have a positive experience in dealing with the town. Shannon understands how positivity is critical to our success, but even before we developed our internal values, she walked the walk as dealing with people just really came naturally to her. Customer service, courtesy, and politeness are some of her best traits. She really is a people person, and she does love working with people. She always has a smile for you when she sees you, and she's good at listening in order to help. And she also is one of the new creators of our internal Sunshine Committee at Town Hall, which spreads office cheer, team building, and camaraderie, and it just fits perfectly with her personality. And most recently, the Sunshine Committee conducted a duck hunt for all our employees, and it got a little competitive, but that was really fun. Everybody enjoyed it. But really, in summary, Shannon is a great person, precious to the town, and we're lucky to have her on our team. So congratulate Shannon with me on her five-year anniversary.
Thank you.
She is indeed a smiling face and always greets you when you come in. It's really wonderful, so congratulations. Next, we'll call on Nancy Carolyn for a tenure of service recognition.
Good morning, Mayor and Board of Commissioners. I would like to introduce Pete Welcomeer, ten years of service. After being told of a job opportunity in the town by an unnamed Nagshead firefighter, Pete started as a part-time fleet mechanic in 2013. Since that day, our town has benefited from his knowledge and experience in small engine repair and maintenance, his welding abilities, and his diagnostic patience for getting problems figured out. Pete became full-time in 2014. Pete is the crew leader and safety officer in fleet maintenance, and he takes the responsibility of making sure the Ocean Rescue four-wheelers are on the beach. Pete looks forward to days off to enjoy water sports and a really good steak. In Pete's words, "I would like to thank the firefighter that told me about the job opportunity 11 years ago with the town. It has worked out well, and I am very thankful. We look forward to 10 more years of service from Pete." Thank you.
We are likewise grateful to Pete and to that firefighter, whoever that was. So everybody keep spreading the word on Nagshead being a great place to work. And Nancy's going to stay in place for a major recognition this morning.
Yes. This morning, Janice Farmer, for 25 years. I'd like to recognize Janice for her 25 years of service. Janice is a crew leader and a safety officer in facilities maintenance. She has a Class A CDL license and is certified as an LPP septic systems operator, pesticide applicator. She is also certified in OSHA scaffolding and electrical maintenance and safety.
Wow.
She is the go-to person for knowledge about all of the town's facilities. Janice volunteers during special events and helps things go smoothly. She is always looking for ways to help out even before being asked, and she also takes the ultimate pride in her, every task she performs. In the words of Janice, Janice's supervisor, Stephen Saunders, "We need 25 more years from Janice." 25 more Janices. Janice is my right hand. Your hard work does not go unnoticed, and I really appreciate all you do. You make our department shine. Thank you.
Go ask the Commissioners to come around, and Janice, if you'll stay up so that we can get a, we want a picture with you. You can't go, you can't go back and work that fast. So we have a certificate of appreciation for you for 25 years. The Nagshead Board of Commissioners applauds the positive impact you have made on your town, your hard work, your loyalty, your expertise. They have not gone unnoticed and are deeply appreciated by all of us. So thank you. Thank you very much. 25 years, aren't you right to speak, so you can say whatever you want to say?
It's been a pleasure working here, and hopefully I'll be around for a little while longer, but I work with a great group of people at Public Services, and I love my job. And thank y'all for looking out for us. Appreciate it.
Very well. Thank you. Janice is one of the town's remarkable employees. I mean, you see her early in the morning, out on the beach, and she's also a great ambassador for the town.
People in the town know her.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I'm on the beach, so they did talk to her.
Yeah, yeah, it's great. So, wonderful. The next item on our agenda is a proclamation for National Police Officers Week. Mayor, I don't know if any of our officers wish to, wish to speak this morning, but I'm going to read the proclamation, and then if you'd like to, Chief, if you'd like to say a word after that, that would be appropriate. Thank you. "A proclamation for National Police Week. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week, and whereas the members of the Nagshead Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the residents and visitors of the town of Nagshead, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression, and whereas the men and women of the Nagshead Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service, and whereas we should each take the time to reflect on the ultimate sacrifice Sergeant Earl Murray Jr. made for the town of Nagshead on May 15th, 2009, and the rest of the officers who have done so nationwide, and let each of us keep their family, friends, and all fellow officers in our thoughts and prayers. Now therefore, the Nagshead Board of Commissioners calls upon all citizens of the town of Nagshead and upon all patriotic, civic, and educational organizations to observe the week of May 12 through 18, 2024 as Police Week with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their community, and in so doing have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Therefore, we do hereby proclaim the week of May 12 through 18, 2024 as Police Week and call upon all citizens of Nagshead to observe the 15th day of May 2024 as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes, this being the first day of May 2024." Having heard the proclamation, a motion would be in order?
Is it moved?
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chief, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you for that, Mr. Mayor. This week is extremely important to us here. When we check on duty, we don't know what's going to bring that day or that evening. We just hope that we can serve the citizens and the public, our visitors, to the best of our ability and be able to go home at night. We lost one of our own 15 years ago this year. In the early morning hours of May 15th, 2009, Nagshead Police Sergeant Earl Murray was dispatched to a burglary in progress. While responding to this call, Sergeant Murray's vehicle hydroplaned, striking a cement utility pole, and he was killed instantly. Sergeant Murray was a veteran law enforcement officer with over 26 years of experience. He loved being a cop, and he truly believed in the age-old code of doing to others as you would have them doing to you. Sergeant Murray left behind a wife, Kim, and his two daughters, Sammy Jo and Paige. The town of Nagshead lost a dedicated and generous police officer. His family lost a loving father and husband, but we all lost a true friend. This year, as I stated, marks the 15-year anniversary of Sergeant Murray's passing. As mentioned earlier, May 15th is dedicated as Police Officer's Memorial Day, but this day holds an extra special place in our hearts because of Sergeant Murray's passing. During that week, the department will be sending two officers to be with the Murray family in D.C. to honor him and the nation's capital alongside thousands of other law enforcement officers. We look forward to attending this event each year to be with the family to continue showing the support for the ultimate sacrifice that Sergeant Murray gave while serving the town of Nagshead. Ask each of you to keep the Murray family in your thoughts and prayers and remember them while this 15-year anniversary of his untimely death approaches. For those of us that knew Earl personally, I will end it with this. Dag gummit.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, Chief. You know, we recognized at the moment of silence those officers who lost their lives and were injured earlier this week and their families, and, you know, you guys do go to work every day, and you never know what may happen, and so we all have a duty, I think, to think of y'all as you're out there doing your work. It's kind of remarkable that, you know, it's a lesser thing, but at virtually the same time that that shooting was happening in Charlotte, we had two fires back-to-back in Nagshead. Our public safety crews, our firefighters, and our police had to respond to both of those and did exemplary work, and they put themselves at risk every day, and we have to recognize and appreciate that, and in fact, we do. So thank you very much. That brings us to a public comment, and I will turn this over to Attorney Wumble.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did notice on the printed agenda at the table that John Leidy's name was listed there. However, he did not prepare me to manage the public comment, so I guess I would ask if there's anybody who's signed up for a public comment, and if you have, please come to the podium, state your name, your address, and I'm not certain if you guys have a time limit, but usually there is a timer that will run, and when it expires, please limit your comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Debbie Swick. I am from Southern Shores, address 59 Deerpath Lane, if you need it.
Thank you.
And the creator of Ban Balloon Releases, NC. I am so pleased and thrilled to see both the resolution and ordinance up for consideration on your agenda. This is a movement that is growing slowly. I do, you know, I am so blessed and fortunate to be able to speak at town councils. I will be addressing the Dare County Commissioners next week. So while it is being taken care of by a senator on the larger scale, I am doing the town-by-town that I can, you know, find time for. Sadly, balloons are something that we need to relearn and reappreciate and re-educate people with. Putting a ban on releases is going to save not only wildlife, but it is going to eliminate an awful lot of litter. I do ask that you do consider, as well as no releases permitted, that you do put a restriction on tied balloons outdoors, on signage, on storefronts, on porches. Those do break free and cause a, you know, debris in the ocean as well. And also, if you can limit the sold balloons in the town of Nagshead to have a weight on them, that restriction will eliminate them going up when they are released and be able to be retrievable. Once they go up, we are not getting them back, and still to this day, we are losing, you know, beautiful wildlife, some endangered and some very much threatened. We are losing whales at an astronomical rate, and it is all, every death is due to human impact. So I thank you so very, very much for putting this on your agenda. I ask that you give an ordinance. Resolutions are wonderful, but ordinances, you know, stop people from doing this. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else signed up or anyone who cares to give a public comment? I think that is it, Mr. Mayor.
You got lucky. It was easy.
I did.
All right, very good. That brings us next to the consent agenda, which you have before you, and a motion would be in order?
Is it moved?
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. That brings us to reports and recommendations from the Planning Board and Planning and Development Director, and we'll call on Director Wyatt.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. I don't have too much for you this morning. I'll try to go through this pretty quickly. So at the Planning Board's last meeting, they had a pretty quick meeting. From that, there's two items that were on your consent agenda for your approval for public hearing at your next meeting, and that's related to LED digital signage for gas stations and prohibiting parking on septic areas. There were no Board of Adjustment meetings for April. The Septic Health Advisory Committee, they did meet recently. They met on April 17th, and those conversations primarily centered around our efforts to advance the recommendations of the updated decentralized wastewater management plan. Right now, that includes purchasing a GPS unit so that we can start locating all the septic systems within the town and having that on an interactive map. So that's going to take a while, but that's something that's pretty exciting. We're also trying to develop some type of platform or a tool that we can take all of the information that we're receiving from our groundwater loggers and our water quality loggers to compile that into something that we can analyze and see trends and move forward with some education there. The EV action plan, I was actually just going to skip over this, but I wanted to say that when we were acknowledging Janice Farmer earlier for her 25 years, I think it was her, when we were about to start boring the electric for the EV chargers, and she was like, oh, there's geothermal there. You don't need to be doing that. So it took Janice 25 years here to know the history and know exactly where everything's located and where we can and can't do a boring. That was very helpful. Sand relocation, so that's wrapped up as of today. There should no longer be any equipment out there on the beach. We had probably a little bit over 280 applications this year, which it's just steadily climbing every year that we do it, and about 360,000 of the 400,000 that was allocated for stabilization has been allocated thus far, so I imagine we're going to reach that 400 pretty quickly because we're still receiving those daily. The Outer Banks Hazard Mitigation Plan update, we do have a planning committee. We discussed that at the last meeting. They met on April 22nd just to kick off, learn about what the update's going to look like, sort of the timeline on that, and Commissioner Lambert was part of that as well. And Doughty Park events, obviously summer's near, so all the events are starting to ramp up. Event Coordinator Paige Griffin has our Doughty Park Farmers Market ready to roll, the Summer Concert Series, Fitness Fridays, Yoga Tuesdays, and then it's really exciting. We have two artists, Jackie Koenig and Kate Lawrence, who recently did their art masks, so have those up on the screen. They're pretty incredible. So Public Services has been helping us with getting the mast located out there on the beach road so we can hang these panels. That's all I have. If you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for this morning?
No questions.
All right, great. Thank you, Carolyn.
Thank you.
Very good. All right. That brings us to new business, and we'll start with committee reports, and I'll start on my left with Commissioner Lambert. Anything this morning?
We did. We actually, we had a government meeting, access channel meeting last Monday, and our Public Information Officer, Roberta Thumann, was able to attend as well. So I thought that was a really cool opportunity to collaborate. And then we also, there's a couple new videos on there, but one of the ones that I wanted to mention was there's a video about Jockeys Ridge, and I know that we posted it on Facebook. Roberta posted it as well, but it's a really great video, if you haven't seen, and perfect timing with everything going on with Jockeys Ridge right now.
All right, very good. All right, thank you.
Nothing new from the Tourism Board, but there was a change made yesterday with the Housing Task Force. It's now a standalone committee. Donna Creep was elected as the chair, Malcolm Ferring as vice chairs. Two subcommittees were developed, first one to meet on Friday, and then they're going to meet every two weeks to go back to try to find a way to spend that money.
All right, very good. Thank you. Good to hear. Commissioner Brinkley?
Couple things to add to what Kelly said to the Septic Health Advisory. Connor gave us some numbers. To date, fiscal year-to-date, six loans have been processed, 90 inspections, and 98 water credits for pumping, and that's year-to-date. That's good. We did have a housing committee earlier this week. We do have, plan to have one more on May 24th to wrap that up, to have it back to the board by the June meeting, and Jeanette's Peer Advisory Council is May 23rd, so I'll have an update in June.
Great, thank you. All right, Commissioner Sanders?
We haven't had another meeting for the Jockeys Ridge celebration, 50-year celebration, but there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes and looking forward to a next meeting there.
All right, very good. It's a little bit out of order. I could save this for the mayor's agenda, but I did have a conversation this morning with the Chair of the Board of Jockeys Ridge, and Senator Bobby Hannig has proposed legislation which has passed committee and will be considered in a short session, which would, so three-part bill, but the essential part of the bill that relates to Jockeys Ridge, it would restore the original protections that were written in the 1970s until such time as the Coastal Resources Commission and the Rules Review Commission agree on language otherwise. So that's good, that's good to hear and good progress there, and I will see Senator Hannig tomorrow, and I will express his thanks for that, for that, air thanks for that effort. That brings us to consideration of appointment or reappointment to boards and committees. We have two committees, the Fireman's Relief Fund Board and the Arts and Culture Committee. And with the Fireman's Relief Fund, Rose Lee's term expires May 24th. She is interested in being reappointed. And at Arts and Culture, the terms of Jenny Flowers and Samantha Walk expire in June, and they are both interested in being reappointed. So discussion or a motion would be in order?
For one or both?
I think, let's do both. I think we can do both.
I make the motion to reappoint those in seats for both the Fireman's Relief Fund Board and the Arts and Cultural Committee.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second? Any further discussion? We appreciate their service and hearing nothing further. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That brings us to a discussion of changes to the town code involving release of balloons. And Andy, you're going to speak to this?
Sure, that's fine, yes. So obviously, at a previous meeting, the Board of Commissioners requested that we bring back an ordinance related to balloon releases, and obviously, this was something that was born out of comments we received from Ms. Swick in particular. The Board asked that we present an ordinance that would make it unlawful to knowingly or intentionally release balloons on town-owned property or on public trust areas such as the beach or waters of the state. So that's what this ordinance does, and it's probably more practical for the town to be able to enforce this ordinance in that manner. Certainly, when we issue permits for people to use our facilities, we can certainly notify people about this ordinance, and that will probably be one of the most effective ways to enforce it. In addition, we can notify the Wedding Association and a lot of those folks about this, and hopefully, given the fact that Nagshead is doing this and the other towns as well, that it will start to catch on and become sort of public knowledge, kind of like the tents.
Okay, yes.
So I do want to say one thing. John Leidy did give me some comments, and I didn't know if Lauren, you were going to say this or not, but...
It's fine, go ahead. I don't mind either way.
Well, you know, in the ordinance in Section B2, he had a clarification. I did share this with Carolyn. He wanted to say that hot air balloons that are controlled by an operator onboard or on ground and are recovered after launching, he wanted to see if we could include that language.
Right.
And with that said, you know, the ordinance is being presented for your consideration, and obviously, there's a resolution that goes along with that.
Okay. I think probably we should, in this case, adopt the resolution and the ordinance separately. They're really kind of separate actions. And so first, with regard to the ordinance, we can start by putting a motion on the floor, and that would be with the amended language.
The motion that we approve is presented with the amended language on B2.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Appreciate staff's work on this. Appreciate the... Appreciate staff's work on this, appreciate the efforts in the community to limit this, and it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a good move, and I'll say a little bit more when we, when we come to the resolution. So, hearing no further discussion, I would say, anyone, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, thank you. Andy, anything to, further to say about the resolution?
I don't have any comments about the resolution. I did want to say thank you to Carolyn and Brittany for their help with the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. This ordinance reflects those that have also been adopted, I believe, by the other towns in, in our, in our community. Generally, further discouraging the release of balloons. I will say, this needs to be broader, certainly than the, than the beach and air communities. I would encourage you, as you work with the state, to reach out to our adjoining counties. I know that there are farmers who maintain fields, ponds, pastures, who also hate balloons. And when you go to Raleigh, that would be a powerful coalition because they love our agricultural industry, our agricultural sector in Raleigh, and if you had some voices from that area, I believe it would also, I believe it would very much benefit the effort to ban them. So, you have the resolution before you, and a motion would be in order.
Same with you.
I have a, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, thank you. You're welcome. That brings us to a discussion of multi-use path signage. Chief Hale?
Morning again, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Coming before you today for some guidance, we've thrown around some ideas in the Police Department with some issues that have come up on the, the multi-use path. Our Deputy Chief Montgomery has done some traveling, and he's a big runner, so he runs on paths when he's going somewhere on vacation or to see his daughters, has taken some pictures along the way to try to bring up some ideas. And after our retreat last fall, I know with the town's strategic plans and goals that were put together, this would go along under our adaptive development of improving pedestrian safety and go along with some user conflicts on the multi-use path. We would be looking to add some non-regulatory signs for speed limits for bicycles that would be a suggestion, and education piece to sort of remind people while they're on the multi-use path. And leave us some pictures in the cave VOC thing. We do have our ordinance still in place that we changed a few years back that would allow us to address cyclists that are being reckless and operating at a speed that is faster than reasonably proper, so we still have that portion of the ordinance. This would just kind of be a visual aid, like I said, to help educate those that are using it. These are just some ideas. I know they're kind of small, I couldn't figure out how to blow them up when I saved them. There you go.
There you go.
This right here would remind people to, to walk on the right, and a cyclist would like pass on the left. Several pictures with the Deputy Chief has, has been in different areas there, along there. We looked and talked about some, some lines striping on the, on the path. I did reach out to DOT to see if they would approve it, being it's in their right-of-way. They did give the go-ahead. Speaking with David Ryan and the manager, I know this would be a more costly aspect of it, so, and we just redid a portion of the multi-use path, so I don't know if we could, if the Board did decide to do something, maybe not a dotted line all the way, but periodically placing arrows to remind, keep left when you pass on a bike, and then walk on the right. So, those ideas right there, more of the arrow than the dotted line. DOT did give their approval. They did mention that if it worked in our town, they would look at maybe doing it in some other areas of the, of the Outer Banks that has multi-use paths, so that could be something that would start and then continue to go all the way through other towns where they have the pass on the, the DOT right-of-way. The signage itself, I know we don't like to get sign litter and create more issues and putting up a lot of signs, so the thought process was that we could add these maybe every mile to see how that works, and put them on a, a sign that is already in place, maybe on the backside of a no-parking pole each direction, and that would bring us to a total of about 22 signs, being we have the, right at 11 miles or a little over 11 miles of, of paths going all the way down to South Nagseth. The speed limit and the, the keep right-left, I think would, would be a good start, but I'm open for suggestions, or if y'all would like to see something different, we can go back to the drawing board and, and figure it out. If y'all have any questions of it, or...
Questions?
No questions, no.
Okay, good.
No questions.
No. You know, I, I don't do as much running as I used to do, but I've done a lot of running on the multi-use path, and it is frustrating, you know, to, it's, it's frustrating to have to put up signs to ask people to do what seems like should be common sense in terms of keeping to the right.
Agree.
But that's what all rules are, that's what all rules are about.
That's true.
I, I would, I would say two things about this. I would encourage more pavement marking than signage, you know, I mean, we, just in terms of sort of the town. I mean, I realize some things you can't do on the pavement, but I, you know, the, the markings, the arrows, and the, even the speed limit could be painted on the pavement. I would consider taking one of our older pieces of pavement in a high-traffic area and experimenting with it and seeing, you know, seeing if we could observe whether we got better behavior with, with the markings before we put them on the new pavement.
Okay.
No, I mean, I agree with you. I appreciate Deputy Chief Montgomery of the Police Department for being ahead of the game.
Yeah, yeah, same. We can, we can do better than our neighbor to the north did, their markings were not, not well, well considered, so, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Next is Nancy will come back to talk about security dash cameras and sanitation vehicles.
Good morning, again. Public Services is requesting the installation of dual cameras on the sanitation trucks. They will provide valuable footage that will help protect the town, particularly during an event where documentation would be necessary. These cameras would capture the event and would include the date, the time, the speed of the vehicle. It would detail what was going on around it. We can set alerts, like for hard braking or hard turning, and the braking might be because a dog ran out in front, and it would allow us to pinpoint a time to go review the footage and not review every piece of it.
Right, okay.
Any more questions?
Well, let me ask, Megan, any questions?
No questions.
Commissioner Sanders?
The only question I have, Nancy, is have we looked at other options besides the, the monthly fee option with these cameras?
Well, we, we looked at this one because we already use Verizon's GPS on the trucks that provide the speed and the location, but not necessarily capture what happened if there is an event.
So, this ties in with the current system?
Yes, sir.
And, but there's an increase in cost?
Yes, sir, because we're adding two cameras per truck, one inside and one outside. Yes, plus the monitor.
That's more information than we receive.
Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioner Brinkley?
Good idea, good help to protect us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Sanders?
I don't have any questions, I just...
Okay, all right, thank you. Then, let me, let me ask, is this a motion that needs to be made?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. That brings us to items referred to and presentations from the town attorney. We do have a closed session later. Do you have anything else for us?
I have nothing else to report.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that. That brings us to items referred to and presentations from the town manager. Andy, is David going to come up, or are you going to start this?
Well, the first item would be the positions, and so, I can do that, and then...
Okay, thank you.
...he'll be the update. Okay, so, basically, we have here a request for the Board to approve these positions, which are going to be included in the town manager's recommended budget that you'll, we'll talk about in a minute. I know this is a little bit out of order, but these are positions that we feel strongly that we need for the upcoming season. One is for an additional sanitation equipment operator. Nancy discussed this in a prior budget workshop, and they have been doing a great job cleaning up the town and the rights of ways and managing the trash along the beach road, and we've initiated several programs to do that, including the cart rollback service, but we, we continue to have to monitor that situation frequently during the summer, especially because of high winds and things being knocked over. And so, I think Nancy's idea with this is that we could have somebody working on the weekends in the summertime to help monitor this, help clean up the rights of ways, and also service an equipment operator, so they would be skilled in that regard as well. Planning, the seasonal events have been very successful. We've had staff from time to time helping Paige Griffin. This would provide somebody who's part-time to help her, and what we're looking at is about 10 hours a week for 10 weeks, just in the, in the seasonal period. And like Paige always does, she already has somebody in mind. She, but she has a good plan to, to do this, so, you know, we need to go ahead and do this if we're going to have an impact on this coming season, and so, I apologize for making this a little bit out of order, but hopefully, it, it would be something that you would support, and we're going to talk about that in the budget, so...
Right, okay.
We have a change to the pay plan and to the position classification schedule.
Right. While we're on this item, at the risk of a spoiler, this does not result in a tax increase. We're looking at a flat budget this year with no tax increase.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate that.
Any questions, Commissioner Sanders?
No, I think it's a great idea.
Commissioner Brinkley, Commissioner Sanders? Commissioner Lambert? Yep, all right, very good. Then, hearing none, then a motion would be in order to approve the two positions.
I'll make the motion to approve the position for Public Service Deputy Sanitation Operator in Part-Time Seasonal Planning and Development Position.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, very good. Now, David, for an update on Public Services.
All right, so, this month has represented a significant amount of work up at the Public Services complex. What I have up on the screen is an exhibit that we have been using to go ahead and track progress along the way. I've got some different colors this month. What I have is in, in the purplish color, that represents buildings under construction; in the orange color, that represents site work that is either nearing completion or has been completed; and the green represents buildings that are nearly complete with construction. So, the way that this is laid out with this aerial view, on the right-hand side is the Administration Building and our Recycling Center, and then to the left is where our main Public Services Complex is located, and we've got four buildings on the left-hand side of the page to consist of the Water Distribution Building, a new Equipment Building, a new Vehicular Storage Building, and a combined Fleet Maintenance, Facilities Maintenance, and Sanitation Building. So, we'll start off on the right-hand side of the page, just show some, some photos. Let me back up here real quick. Okay, this is where we were last month with the exterior construction of the building. We had a couple photos on the interior. This is the conference room. You can see there were some ceiling tiles that had still yet to be installed. The flooring had yet to be installed, and this is our lobby area, again, a work in progress. Where we currently are is for the exterior of the building, we've got the pavers installed, the striping installed, some of the exterior signage completed, and this is on the north side of the building. You can see it's nearly in its finished state with the railings in place, all the siding and trim in place, the gutter downspouts installed, and this is a view from the rear of the site. This is taken from the drop-off area for our Recycling Center, looking back towards the west, toward the building, and you can see that this, this ramp and this drop-off area is nearly complete with bollards installed, and just some additional minor work to be completed in and around the rear of the building. Yesterday marked the, the day that we installed some furniture over there at our new Administration Building. This is a look at the current state of the conference room. You can see the conference room table was installed, the blinds have been installed, all of the ceiling tiles have been finished off. You can't see it from this view, but there's also a TV that has been installed on the very northern face of the wall within the conference room. These are some pictures of some of the offices that have been finished off. This is actually Nancy's office, right here with the furniture installed, and you can see that the restrooms, this is a shower that's installed in one of the restrooms, all the tiling is complete, and the, these rooms have been finished off and are almost ready for use. This is a picture of our training room. You can see the, the monitor has been installed up on the wall, some of the EV equipment has been installed, and then, right next door to this is the break room. All the cabinetry has been installed, and the appliance is delivered and just ready for installation. So, a lot of progress made on the Administration Building here over the course of the past month, and I'll talk about schedule here once we do a review of all the, the various buildings. The next building that is nearly ready for completion is the Water Distribution Building, which is in the top left-hand corner. And let me go back to where we were last month. Last month, this is photo taken of the exterior of the building. It, it looked nearly complete with the windows installed, the garage doors installed, and here's a picture taken here within the past week, not a whole lot of difference. That's because the focus of the work has been on the interior of the building. The flooring has been installed, as well as the cabinetry here in the break room that you see up there on the monitor. You can see the offices, the walls have been painted, the flooring installed, as well as some of the blinds have been installed, so, getting very close. And then, this is looking out into the shop area. A lot of the overhead utility work is currently being finished off. There's also exterior utility connections that are currently in progress, as well as startup of the HVAC. There's also exterior utility connections that are currently in progress, as well as startup of the HVAC system. So, another building that is getting very close to occupancy. Staying over here on the left-hand side of the page, we've got the equipment building. This is a photo taken from last month. This was taken here recently. Again, it doesn't look like a lot has occurred here, with a lot of the focus being on the other buildings, the administration and water distribution, to finish those off. But here are some recent pictures. The garage door has now been installed. They're using this as a temporary staging area for some of their equipment for the other buildings. And you can see that a lot of the interior work, which not is going, not a lot is going on in this building as far as utilities and extra finishes. This is more utilitarian in nature. But these are just some photos of the work that has been completed to date. I know the board was out conducting a site visit a couple months ago, and this is the vehicle storage building. This had yet to be started. This is a photo that was taken last month, and this is the progress that we've seen over the past 30 days. We've got the roofing installed, and the blockwork on a large percentage of the overall building has started and has been constructed there along the northern and eastern faces of the building. Here's a photo taken from the north, looking back towards this facility. So, a lot of progress has been made on, on this building over the past 30 days. And lastly, we have the combined fleet facilities and sanitation building. This is a photo that was taken last month. This is where we are this month. Again, not a whole lot of difference on the exterior, but we'll focus on a lot of the interior work. This is in the facilities maintenance bays. You can see there's a lot of overhead utilities that have been installed. The concrete slab has been, has been poured, and the garage door is installed in this area. This is a view looking from, excuse me, looking from the mezzanine, which is above the common area, looking towards the facilities maintenance bays. And you can get a, just a better sense of the overall height and some of the utility work that has taken place here recently. They've also started with the cabinetry installation over in the common area within the combined building, as well as locker installation. So, you know, they're really starting to get into some of the, the final finishing work. Here within the offices, they've installed the ceiling grids. They've already started painting, and so we've seen some pretty good progress there. And this is a photo on the fleet, fleet maintenance side. And this is the, this is the eastern half of the building, and we've got six new bays that are, are going in. This is a photo taken of the first couple bays. The concrete was poured last week, and what we see in this photo is there's a partition wall that's taking place, and that partition wall divides the first two bays from the last four bays. And so, that work has been progressing. So, with that being said, the schedule and moving forward. So, for the administration building, which is the closest to occupancy, we, we don't have a definitive move-in date right now. The reason being is there's an issue with delivery of the interior doors, and we, we should have an answer on that today. The doors were ordered four months ago, and they've been held up for some reason or another, but we should have an answer on that today. If we're able to overcome that challenge, there's also the septic system. We had a final on that yesterday. There are some additional modifications that need to be made to that before that can be reviewed again and signed off on. And then there's numerous other minor things that need to occur over the course of the next week or so in order to make all the utility connections, cable, TV, internet. All of that is ongoing right now, but just having all that come together in a timely fashion. So, as it stands right now, we've got furniture installed. We could be as soon as a week towards occupancy, but that could change depending on the delivery of the interior doors. Just to give an overview of some of the other schedules for the buildings. Water distribution, which is also close, right now, what we've been told, we're looking at a targeted date of the week of May 20th for occupancy, so just lagging a couple weeks behind for that facility. The equipment building, that could be ready for use as soon as June of 2024, so we're about 30 to 45 days away from being able to, to use that building. The large building, the combined fleet facilities and sanitation building, we're, we're a little bit delayed on that building, and the, the reason being is that we've got a specialized lift that is going in the fleet side, and there's been some issues with the design and then also implementation of that, but they are moving forward with that within the next couple weeks. But that's kind of held up progress to finishing off the eastern side of the building. So, we're, we're looking at potential alternatives to do partial occupancy, but there's, I guess, some conversations that we need to have amongst a group, amongst the deputy fire chief, the building inspector, to see if that's a possibility. Because right now, if, if we're looking at a total building occupation, we could be delayed as much as August due to the delay with this, with this lift and, and the pit construction. So, that's something that's a work in progress, and we'll keep you posted as we move forward with that. So, that, in a nutshell, is the, the overall progress and, and schedule as we move forward with the complex.
Okay, right. Thank you, David. Questions, Commissioner Lambert, Commissioner Sears?
None.
Commissioner Brinkley?
Thank you for the update.
Yeah. Talking about as well as most projects go, you know, some of these special items are, you know, real boogers when they, you know, like the lift.
Yeah, it's the, the last mad dash to, to go ahead and try and gain occupancy, and there's so many different things that have to come together at the same time, and we're getting close. But, you know, there's just some, some things that we had not accounted on that, you know, could potentially hold us up from occupancy. I guess the, the other part to that too is not just occupancy of the building, but also the operation of the recycling facility. And so, I think I had recorded out last month that there, there may be a little bit of a lag time between when we occupy and when we start that operation up, but we don't anticipate that to be more than a week or two. So, we're, we're considering that, but there's some additional things that we have to consider and make sure that we've got that site prepared and, and ready for public use.
All right, great. Thank you, David. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
That brings us to the recommended budget. I'll say to the board in lieu of a, a break, if you need to get up and, get up.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, I guess we're ready.
Yeah.
All right, so obviously, we have today the presentation of our fiscal year 2024-25 recommended budget. We've certainly been working on this for several months now. Certainly not just myself, but a great team of folks that have been working on it. We certainly appreciate the opportunity to present it to the board and to the Nags Head community. As you know, Nags Head is a great place to live and visit. This didn't happen by chance. It's the result of decades of thoughtful decision-making by individuals who care deeply about this town, including this board. They set the course for us, and we're always working to continue this legacy. Obviously, at a minimum, do no harm. But last summer, the town completed a community-wide survey to receive feedback on our services and our town's future priorities. In the fall, the Board of Commissioners, this group, including Renee Cahoon, gathered and developed a strategic plan that has now been published. The community survey results and the strategic plan are both on the town's website, and I would encourage anybody to look at those documents. Obviously, after we completed the strategic plan, we initiated the budget process. To date, the board has held two workshops, and we discussed budget priorities and capital items. This helps us put together, hopefully, a budget document that's more in line with what you expect, and that hopefully requires less modification moving forward. Since the budget and the strategic planning processes are multi-year efforts, I want to just cover briefly some of the things that have happened over the last few years. In FY '23, the board created the town's capital investment fund, which provided dedicated resources to fund capital projects, provided a mechanism to reduce reliance on financing capital items. It was this year that the town received its first bond rating, and we financed the public services complex and our smart water meters. We also began construction of the public services complex. In FY 2024, we continued construction of this complex. As David mentioned, we're nearing completion of two of the buildings, administration and water distribution, and we'll be occupying those buildings in the next few weeks. We've also installed the infrastructure for our smart water meter systems, and the installation of those meters has now begun. The FY 2024 included a pretty significant tax increase for the town in Nags Head, 4.25 cents, and a 12.3% water rate increase. Obviously, the board had acknowledged at the time that this was necessary to fund these major projects, but it was something that was desperately needed, and so everybody agreed to proceed. Now, we're here in FY '24-25. This is the third year using our capital investment fund. This budget continues to implement the direction provided by the town's Board of Commissioners, including the efforts from the previous strategic plans and also from the community survey and strategic plan the board just completed. For FY '24-25, we're recommending a balanced budget with no modifications to any of the town's tax or water rates. I'll say that again, no modification to any of the town's tax or water rates. The budget continues with an aggressive approach to implementing maintenance plans for infrastructure and replacement schedules for equipment. It also includes targeted facility improvements and upgrades to Nags Head's quality of life and to respond to community needs. There's also a concerted focus on the town's workforce, including a series of recommended total awards initiatives that holistically consider how to make Nags, Nags Head a great place to work. The town's goal is to effectively recruit, retain, and train employees to provide an environment where they can do their best work. So, some highlights of this budget include, we are now working on a town hall and fire station master plan. The board initiated this back in December. We have been working with the county to try to come up with a plan for an EMS station and also for a future Fire Station 16 replacement. Obviously, when you look at these two properties, what's here and across the street, anything that we have, we do will have an effect on everything else that we do. And we also need to consider what our future needs might be for these two complexes. And so we decided to move forward with a master plan that has not been finalized yet, but we're working on, on that, and hopefully we'll finalize that in the next few months. So this budget does include funding the initial recommendation from that plan. We've been talking for several years about ocean rescue housing. We are finally trying to move forward with something that would accommodate housing for about a third of our ocean rescue staff. This would be located on the site of the former Outer Banks Medical Center, which is hosting the community care clinic, but there's also available space on the eastern side of the property that we may be able to do something here for our ocean rescue staff. In FY '24, we started working on a fire staffing working group to do a staffing analysis for the department. We were looking at the standards provided by the National Fire Protection Association, as well as our local climate and conditions and operating conditions. To partially fund this group's recommendation, we're proposing to increase the part-time pool funding by $27,000 for a total of roughly $50,000 to fund a part-time pool of firefighters. And this would help us increase our staffing levels at Station 16, particularly during the period between Memorial Day and Labor Day, which is when we receive our highest volume of calls. In the future years, we're gonna continue to look at this recommendation from the working group and see how we can best implement that. Infrastructure, we recently paved a one-mile section of the B-Tread multi-use path from Epstein to Lakeside. Next year, we would be looking at spending the grant funds we received previously to do a larger portion of the path. Our goal would be to rehabilitate the path between Lakeside and Wilbon Junction, as well as going from Epstein to Dune Street. Obviously, this would be as funds permit, but we do plan to do a larger section of the path next year and following years. After that, we would do all the way to Eighth Street for new sidewalks, and the board is aware of this. We talked about doing West Bay Meadow and West Windjammer Drive in North Ridge. We're gonna be using grant funds we received from the Golden Leaf Foundation to provide drainage system upgrades on South Memorial, and we're also gonna pave South Memorial from Bidham Street to Eighth Street and do some of the side streets in the area. We're also gonna be providing asbestos cement waterline replacements in that area and paving Gannett Lane. We did switch some of the paving funds this current year. Originally, we were gonna do this section, but we decided to do Old Nags Head Place since we were doing the drainage project there. So, that, that's what we're doing. And Old Nags Head Place paving is underway right now and is supposed to be wrapping up in the next couple of days. Additionally, this fall, we're hoping to begin construction of a fairly major drainage project in South Nags Head, on South, Old Oregonlet Road, for which we received about $3 million of grant funds for previously. With regards to some public safety initiatives, police has got two projects in the CIP. One is to provide alternate power for the traffic signals in the town, so then if we have an outage, we can go and hook up generators to those and have them operate. In that situation, it does create a huge burden on our police staff to have to maintain those signals if they're down. So, we're also looking at trying to partner with the Outer Banks Visitors Bureau and NC DOT to put a pedestrian signal at the Soundside Event Site, would alleviate the, the need to have a traffic pedestrian crossing guard manned all the time during events, and that would certainly help our staff. With respect to the beach, obviously, the town completed its beach nourishment master plan this past year. We are looking at our next project in the summer of 2027. Planning for that would begin roughly in 2025. That would allow for permitting, bidding, and financing to occur. We would also recommend doing nourishment in six-year intervals per the plan, and vegetative sprigging and other stabilization would be included in all future projects. And we would also propose to continue with our sand relocation and, and dune stabilization program that we, the grant program that we've had for several years. Currently, we're replacing the beach walkovers at Lagerhead and Governor, and in FY '25- Currently, we're replacing the beach walkovers at Lagerhead and Governor, and in FY '25, we'd be looking at Holden Street and Junko's. Several pieces of, of equipment and vehicles have been proposed in this budget, including a front-load sanitation vehicle and vehicles and equipment for police, ocean rescue, water, and planning, as well as town hall improvements, including windows and HVAC. As I mentioned previously, employees are greatest asset. We continue to recommend a strategy to help our employees improve our work environment and culture. For this coming year, we're recommending a 4% cost of living adjustment. This considers the January CPI, as well as maintaining competitiveness with other local agencies. We're continuing with our, with ingrate increases to allow for movement in our pay ranges, and we've budgeted an additional 1% to allow for a new performance-based merit program, which the board discussed at the retreat. We are continuing with funding for our career progression programs and 5% contribution to 401K. For staffing and organizational changes, as you just approved, the sanitation equipment operator and the part-time person for planning, we appreciate that, and we also included the $27,000 for the part-time pool for firefighters. That is the extent of our staffing and organizational recommendations for the coming year. Grants, obviously, grants has been a big focus in the last few years. We have almost $5 million in grant funding for FY '25. We're also applying for more to address infrastructure and board initiatives. We have an estuar and shoreline management plan that we completed a few years ago, and we're looking to try and implement some of the recommendations for that. We've applied for grant funding to implement three of the pilot sites, including the Harvey Sound Access and Event Site, Soundside Road, and Villa Dunes Drive. We're looking at grant funding for Junko Street and June Street Beach Access improvements. We're going to try to apply for grants for engineering and design of our next beach nourishment project. We're looking at applying a conservation easement on the town end property around the Fresh Pond, 250 acres roughly, and we would be applying for a grant to pay for the value of that conservation easement. We're looking at a cybersecurity grant to improve our enterprise resource planning financial software, which is Tyler Technologies. Stormwater infrastructure improvements along Wrightsville from Bonnet to Bainbridge, that would be project area four, and one of our previous stormwater CIPs, looking for Lassie grants for that. And then, obviously, we're going to apply for grants for the sidewalks that we just discussed in our CIP. So, that is the highlight of our budget. I'm sorry, it was fairly long-winded. I would like to express the utmost gratitude to our staff who developed the budget and assisted throughout the process. Specifically, I need to name Amy Miller, our deputy town manager and finance officer, for her hard work on this, deputy finance director Brooke Norris, Roberta Thumann, our public information officer, Jan Mielke, our human resources director, and all of our department heads, staff, town engineer, office assistants, managers. Everybody's involved in this process. It's a team effort, and I really appreciate everybody's help. Finally, the Board of Commissioners has been extremely gracious and helpful and engaged in this process. I really would like to thank the board for the effort you've put into this the last few years. I think it's gone fairly well, and I hope you agree. With that said, I know we were talking about a budget workshop on the 15th. I understand that several of you have a conflict on that day, so perhaps you could discuss a date when most of you could be here, and I'm certainly happy to answer any questions.
Questions for the manager. All right.
Thank you.
Hearing none. Andy, thank you. That brings us to the Board of Commissioners' agenda. We will need to discuss that date. I don't know that we need to discuss it here seated. We do need to determine a date for that, though.
Do need to recess to it. Recession or adjourn to it is probably what you would want to do.
Okay. Okay. All right. And is there a recommendation for what date we would go to? So, we, we have, we have conflicts on the 15th.
I spoke with most of you yesterday, and we talked about the week of the 20th. It seemed like the 21st, which is a Tuesday, could be a day when most of you could be I know the mayor said the 22nd he would not be here.
I'm on vacation that week, but I am breaking that vacation on Tuesday anyway for something else that I, that I couldn't avoid, so if we could do it on the 21st, that works best for me.
I'm fine with the 21st.
Can we do it after 10:00 or 10:30?
I don't see why not.
Huh? No? I mean, we got, I mean, a task force, maybe on the 21st, or I can show up late, one of the two.
Whatever time works for the board.
Is 10:30 okay with everybody? 10:30? 10:30? 10:30 on the 21st?
The planning board is meeting here on the 21st.
Is there probably a meeting the same time if we meet elsewhere?
We could use the police training room.
Use the police or fire station, training room or the fire station?
Let's check real quick.
I've got something in the afternoon. 2:45, and take me an hour and a half to get there, so as long as I left here by 1:15, 1:15.
We could always meet at 1:00 P.M.?
Yeah, I can't do that.
Okay. All right. Perry's checking.
Okay.
Shane, do you know if the fire station's available on 21st?
Meet at my house. While they are doing that, let's see. I think we could start on the Commissioners' agenda. So, I'll start. Commissioner Sanders, do you have anything to add this morning, bring to the board?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Brinkley?
Just real quickly, I know you and I both had an opportunity to talk to the fire chief and deputy fire chief on their excellent job that was done at the fires. To me, looking, just knowing how hard the wind was blowing, I thought it was a challenging condition. The fire chief said it's actually favorable to push it out offshore, but thank you to you and your mutual aid partners and to the police department for the, for the excellent work in saving those structures. Thank you.
I'll, I'll add to that. There was an observation made by the fire chief this morning in discussing that about how well Naggshead's team works together, and that our police were, were on the spot responding to those events, and I know it is the product of a lot of planning and work. That doesn't happen by accident, but we do appreciate what our public safety folks do out there, and, and that y'all bring excellence to the table. So, thank you very much.
Commissioner Sears?
I would echo what both Commissioners said, and also want to take the time to acknowledge the planning department and the Naggshead Task Force or Housing Committee. I hear good things throughout the community about the work that you're doing, so I wanted to acknowledge that.
Yep. Thank you. I'm glad that you brought that up. I was talking with Commissioner Brinkley about that earlier, and I'll echo that as well, not particular to not knowledgeable about the details of the discussions, having assigned it to that group, understanding that that group is doing excellent work and making good progress. So, thank you.
Commissioner Lambert?
I'll echo what you guys said about the fires. I was really impressed with what you guys did, and also to our neighboring communities for their support as well. Thank you very much.
Yep. Very good. All right. Thank you.
So, I was just informed that you can take your pick of police training room or fire station. Both are open.
Okay. How about the training room? It's a little more, fires a little more space than we need, I think, so, especially for a workshop. We usually don't have a lot of people show up for a workshop, so I would say that when we get to that point, we will recess to, what did we say, 10:00 or 10:30 on the 21st?
10:30.
10:30 on the 21st at the training room.
Correct. Yeah, thank you.
All right. Thank you. So, we covered our Commissioners' agenda. I had nothing else to add to that agenda. That brings us, let's see, before we go to closed session, any other business anyone's aware of for the board? All right? Thank you. Then that will bring us to close sessions for two purposes, and if I may, I will make those motions, a request for a closed session to discuss possible acquisition of real property located at 4222 South Corrotown Highway pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A5, and also to consult with the town attorney regarding matters protected by attorney-client privilege to include the Cherry Incorporated litigation and the pending litigation regarding Dare County municipalities versus the state of North Carolina authority, zoning authority pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A3.
Is that moved?
Have a motion. And a second, any discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Thank you. The board will be in closed session. All right. The board has returned to open session. Is there, could we report out? Attorney Wumble, could you report from the closed session?
Yes. We, attorney gave, advised the board regarding the matters we went to closed session, and there was no action taken.
Very good. Thank you. We already checked for other business, so a motion to recess to
21st.
May the 21st at 10:30 a.m. in the police training room would be in order.
Is that moved?
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you.